And are there any additions to the agenda? Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
I think so. Has everybody read the minutes from April 26?
Yeah.
Eighteen, yeah, are there any corrections to it?
None that I'm aware.
If there are none, can I hear a motion to accept them as written?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
That's Larry Dean Heather, in case you didn't see it. And the minutes for May 10th, the May 10th meeting, has everybody read those and do we have any corrections?
Is it May 10th or May 6th? Because the minutes say Thursday, May 6th. Oh, no, sorry. That's the other meeting. Sorry. I was confused.
Any other corrections or non-corrections? Okay, can I hear a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstain? And that carried. And do we have anyone CJ with here for the privilege of the floor? Has anyone signed up?
I did not receive anything. Perhaps Heather did though.
No, I did not.
All right, Doug, the town board report, please.
Joe, you want to go your Doug Road presentation that you and CJ did? Um, sure. Uh, you want me to do it now quickly at the end? Yeah, um, the town is looking into replacing Doug Road because the residents on Doug Road don't get fire service. They can't get heavy equipment over there to maintain the road or do many things. It's a county bridge, but the count is applying for grants from the state to cover 95% of the cost of it. And the county will kick in the rest of it. And we're taking the lead because about two years ago, the fire department came to the town board and said, hey, we can't service anybody on Doug Road. And so we're trying to speed up the process of getting those folks serviced. I've been spending a lot of time talking to Doug Road residents and they're all very interested in the bridge. And the town board got a presentation on the grant process and where we're at, which is at the very beginning of the process.
Can you remind me where Doug Road is?
Ludoville. Or excuse me, Ludoville. Yeah.
Oh, is it? Correct. Yeah, 1993, the water was up to within about six inches of that. Larry Beck had two feet of water in his living room. Now that that might be an old Groton Bridge, in which case it might not be a bad idea to see if it could be taken down without completely destroying it. And maybe putting it somewheres in a town park.
It's got some rust issues to it. I'm not sure if it's worth pulling apart and trying to redo while the engineers took a look at it and they've got a whole series of photos of areas that are rusting out and have structural issues.
Yeah.
It's historic, right, Larry?
Yeah.
What's a Groton Bridge, Larry?
Uh, Groton Bridge were wrought iron and steel bridges that were made in Groton, New York in the early part of the 20th century and they've they made several of them all over the state and quite a few of them have been salvaged and and used as historical pieces. Basically, they're all all the same. They're like a Warren Trust, but they're a trust bridge with the trust up above the road bed.
Thank you.
So there's some historical significance there. We might want to pay attention to if we're going to take it down.
If it, yeah, if it is a Groton Bridge, it could be something that would be worth taking a look at.
That's not the structure they described. The structure they described was these two I-beams running across the bottom of it that they saw as really problematic because if one of them fails, the whole bridge fails. The new technique is to have multiple beams, not just two.
I think I think those were added to the original bridge because that was getting a little bit on the weak side. I can't remember exactly when, but I do believe it was done since 1960.
Hey, Joe, Joe?
Yep.
Um, just a request, if possible. If they replace the bridge, could they possibly add some architectural detail since it's an old style neighborhood? And maybe the guardrails, the the edging of the bridge has some character to it as opposed to say the modern bridge that they replaced in Ludoville? I would love that. It's early for us to put that in because we're just putting grant stuff together. But I think you're right. I think having a pretty bridge would be nice. Right. Wouldn't take that much more, I don't think, cost to add a little more detail rather than a modern style bridge as far as the the barriers, maybe a little more detail. That's all. Just keep that in mind. I like that idea.
Okay, Doug.
All right. So on with the rest of the more the meeting we had last Wednesday. Our couple people spoke, well, we had a nice presentation with Jim Morris from TG Miller about the grant process as well for the Doug Road Bridge. Everything else been covered on that. Basically had two people with privilege of the floor, both Doug Road or nearby residents in opposition to a two lane bridge as opposed to a single lane, which is they feel is all they need. Some of the rhetoric that came in after that was that the state probably wouldn't do that. We're looking to make it two lane for what whatever reason. But anyway, that was a two privilege of the floor. Been on to some reports. Everything's going pretty well with the town. From, you know, the Parks and Rec Highway Director Planning such and so forth. Consent agenda, we had a motion authorizing supervisor to sign Lansing Youth Commission Program Agreement for 2021 with a Cornell Cooperative Extension. A motion authorizing stormwater operating and management and reporting agreement for lock 34. Bit near the Dollar General. A motion approving and mending 503 emergency situations of employee handbook. A motion to schedule public carrying to consider special use permit at 320 Peruville Road. A resolution upgrading information aid in parks and recreation office. A resolution authorizing highway superintendent to hire information aid, heavy equipment mechanic, motor operator, motor equipment operator, automotive mechanic assistant and part-time employee. A resolution hiring full-time labor for Parks and Rec. A resolution approving the 2021 annual stormwater report. A resolution approving audit and budget mods for the supervisors' report. We came out of that. That's the consent agenda. Most motion authorizing developers agreement for Marabato Holdings, Inc., site plan project. And a resolution authorizing settlement and directing town council to collect same and discontinue Collier Trust litigation matter. And that was about it.
Anybody have any questions for Doug?
What was the special permit on Peruville Road for?
I don't recall. That's all that was on it.
It's for for the the Wazza turf field, which will be reviewed by Ken Gordon.
Thank you, CJ.
Yeah, no worries.
Which is on our agenda tonight and is the next agenda project or next next item on the agenda. So does anyone else have any more questions for Doug? All right, we'll move right into the Wazza turf field site plan review. Is Steve here CJ or is anyone here for that?
Uh, yep, we have Stephen Lamar here. Hold on just a moment. We'll miss him.
Lamar and Steve. Going to bring us up to date on what we're working on here?
Sure. We we we're not, we're not, we are not pursuing the daycare center anymore for the time being. So we're just just going to look at the turf field. So we are looking to put the turf field, we've moved the moved the location of it closer to the road near where the near where the barn is on the property. And and so it wouldn't be as far in on the driveway. And so we're we're still looking to put 100 foot by 60 foot small turf field with walls and lights on the property along with a with a parking lot.
And is is that parking? And maybe seem like a dumb question and it might be, but is that adequate for what you're what you expect there for fans? People that'll come to watch? It doesn't look like there's very many spaces there. And I would assume that you would end up and, you know, I just drove down Route 13 past the the beer gardens up there. And over the weekend and there were cars lying down Route 13 on both sides going both directions. And I thought, we want to make sure that doesn't happen to Peruville Road if soccer becomes an in thing and everybody in town wants to stop up there and watch the game.
Jerry, I think the best way to answer that, if I if I may, is that the size of the field that we're using right now. And one of the main reasons to get that field was for the folks that are already using that space to use it privately.
Oh.
And the influx, what we're talking about in using the space are kids and adults that are private members of either Leafer, which is Rogers Adult Group that would play there on its on its normal nights, or they're members of my soccer club that I train there. And if in like right now, tonight, you would take the same amount of kids that are training at the two addresses, whether it's the Liberty Field, which is the field right next door to Alex Cole Paving, or the actual Leafer Field where the clubhouse is. So in terms of traffic, you're talking to one of the guys that will be responsible for the field. It's like, it's mine. You know, it's not.
Adequate.
Yeah, it is more than adequate because we're still dealing with the only folks that would have access to it right now today. Only the people using the club right now. And I think one of the best ways to look at it is if we were to go out there right now and take some plywood, me and everybody here, and we said, we're going to raise a soccer field. We would take some plywood, we would round it off and surround a piece of grass that is already there existing. We're just bringing in a company from Idaho that can give us professional boards with a turf field and some LED lights that are only going to shine on the field. That's all we're doing. And the only people using it have to call me to use it. Because it's for my kids. It's for the club members. And until we're ready to open it up to anybody else, we know that the flow of traffic, we know what it looks like from the previous seven years of being on that property. It's private adults and private soccer kids. And we're the ones that use it. It's our parents dropping off their kids, dropping and going. We're just giving them a turf surface so that when it just gets cold in December, it's cold in November and January. We don't have to pay anybody to use their field. We have procured our very own private training space for our club members. And that is really the bare bones of what it is right now. The folks that are driving past us, they just see a bunch of kids on Monday through Thursdays training back off somewhere. We're just going to give them a different training surface. That's it. Really.
Go ahead. Thank you.
I'm sorry if that was long.
Oh, that's all right.
I don't I don't have any argument with the whole idea of the field. I recognize its value and I think it's a great thing. But what Jerry asked is you've got 12 parking spaces there. If if the kids' parents stay to watch them practice, is there going to be enough parking space?
I'd say yes, because they're parking there now, sir. 100%.
Yeah, you know, we don't have a book we can go to and say for a soccer club, you have to have X number of parking spaces. The only other thing I had to say had you mentioned the lights. And if you recall, I mentioned the lights before when the field was further back and in the other location. And with I agreed with you with the with the field back there that the lights wouldn't have a problem. I just want to make sure they take into consideration the new location of the field with regard to the lights because that can be an issue on that road. So just be aware that that's still one of our concerns.
Okay, they not glare out into the traffic.
Yeah, because it's closer to the road than the than the field was the last time we talked about it.
I think these are probably tunable LEDs and they'll just light up the field and not much else. Are you going to light the parking area?
I don't think so. Right, right now, again, gentlemen, we're looking at a space that if we were to just pull into the clubhouse area. It's lit enough for members to use the.
The internet plays funny games as I saw.
Have kids out of there at nine o'clock in the evening. And I don't think it's a situation where the lit parking lot necessarily again be any more than what's already existing there. But in if this project gets slowed down because of lights, we will light that parking lot. It will have to be. Everything would be up to what you guys are.
You're you're not, I'm not interrupting, but you've frozen on the screen as far as I'm concerned at least. And
You're back now.
Yep, you're back now. But you're you're not really open to the public in general, right? You're just a club that's that's open to the soccer players and their families. Right? Oh, now you're muted, Lamar.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the folk, the folks that join Leafer, the adults, they pay a nominal fee. And all of the kids that train there, they join our soccer club, they register with the state. That's where they get their insurance from. There's no, there's not a single child that comes and plays from the age of three to 18 that doesn't do this process. The college kids that come back to cover them, guess what you have to do? You got to pay your $35 to register because everybody that comes on to Steve and Roger's land, we have to cover them just for the mere fact that we're stepping out there with children. We have to. That's that's part of our association with the state because they have to be insured.
Does anyone have a question for Steve or Lamar?
Yeah, I I have some more questions regarding the the parking and the driveway. So the the parking may be adequate. I do question the direction of flow for traffic back around the back of the building. And then how people are potentially, if they're dropping off, going to easily get out of there. I'm just curious as to why, when you come off the street, you don't turn to the right and then go down the west side of the field and then connect up to this new road you have and then kind of make it a loop with the parking on the west side instead of on the east side. Would seem seem like you'd probably spend the same amount of money on, you know, gravel and and excavation and that kind of thing. But give yourself a traffic circle instead of a dead end.
I think that's a good idea, Dean. It's a very good idea.
I I agree with you and and I had I had mentioned to the company the company that's building the turf field set this drawing in. And I had asked them to modify it to put it on the west side and and they haven't done that yet. And is George George Hunt on this call?
Uh, no, I don't see see him here in the waiting room.
And I have a text to him, Steve. I know that I talked to George earlier today and he was flying back in to Boise, Idaho. He was out and he may still be en route either to where he needs to get to from the airport. But I talked to him earlier and I know he was on a flight.
I I total agreement with that. I I thought it would save money to put the parking lot on the west side of the field. And then and then it wouldn't be crossing where people walk from the clubhouse. They wouldn't be crossing the road then to get to the turf field.
Well, I don't think it would necessarily save money, but I don't think it would cost you anymore. You could get a traffic loop. You could always add, if you needed it, that additional parking on the north side or on the east side later on.
Yeah, we're we're not actually approving this as a subdivision. I think we're making a recommendation to the town board for a special use permit.
Yeah, basically, this is just site plan, right? Modifieds the plan?
I would think given our our history, talking about plantings that we'd probably want to see some between the, you know, along the roadway there, especially since there's no there's no overhead utility lines that if you see some planting.
Hey, I got a quick question for you.
I'm in the middle of a meeting, but what is it?
Oh, well.
Uh, just to clarify, as Dean was saying, site plan definitely includes parking, access, plantings and lighting. So they're all appropriate for us to talk about.
I've got a question about how about lighting along the walkway? Because isn't that where the bathrooms are in the old clubhouse?
Yeah.
So should that walk be lighted somehow between the the new field and the clubhouse?
Yeah, we were.
Evening use of that?
We were going to put in the low the low level ground, you know, the two or three foot high ones.
Ballards.
On the on the ground.
Okay, good.
So yeah, we'll want to see your lighting plan.
Folks, I got George texting me. He's I'm going to give him the proper the proper link so he can find us, okay? One second.
Steve, how many players on the field at a time?
For the turf field with adults, it would be 10, 10, maybe 12 at the most. Kids, it could be a could be 14 to 16. I Lamar, is that about right?
I'd say no more than 14 to 16.
Yeah.
I mean, it is the the games are, the field is built to play for for adults, one goalkeeper. You're looking at 10 adults. And the and the and the guys I talked to in Saratoga Springs said that space is fantastic for five adults and a goalkeeper, a fantastic space. Now you now you throw in eight year old kids who I just left tonight. I can pack 20 of them little jokers in it 10 and a half and they're having the time of their lives because the ball's never out of bounds. And at the end of the day, you've got you guys got to think. I'm in the business right now of how many touches can I get really, really small kids on the ball so they love this game? I don't want these kids having to chase a ball 25 yards down the way. And I can get an extra 25 touches on. And since I'm a Lansing resident and been here with Steve for all of these years, when you guys are handing out those awards to them state champions from Lansing, those are the little buggers I've been coaching for all these years. Them little jokers are still, they need touches on the ball. And that's like our little indoor field. I'm giving them a little indoor-ish space because it multiplies what they can do. But here's Mr. Hunt on the phone. If you guys have questions for that guy.
Yeah, I was I was just asking that in relation to parking.
George?
Yes.
Parking stuff and the rendition. We're talking about it.
Yes.
Can you help us a little bit in what you drew and how you drew it that way?
Yeah, um, and actually, talking with Steve, I think that the parking lot is going to move to the other side of the field. So we just, yeah, because it doesn't make sense to put it on the far side. But I mean, that that was that was just a recent after that rendition was drawn. But why it was drawn that way was the that's what the architect like that would that would be the the architect's work.
George, do you see the potential for a loop?
Around the field?
No. As you put the driveway on the parking on the west side to be able to come off of the main road onto your driveway and then be able to go into the parking by the field and then kind of come back around to the driveway.
Oh, I see. I see like a roundabout parking is what you're asking. Yeah. Yeah, um, I mean, it I think that is that stuff is is easy to adjust whatever is needed to make sure that 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 space is usable. I think when we were talking about the parking, the the most interesting thing is, you know, there's there's already fields there. So they're already parking there to to use those fields. So, you know, adding adding too much parking, I don't know. I so I don't know what we need to to add or or do. But yeah, if it needs to be a roundabout type parking, that's that's easy to do on that on that side and not have a big old a big old parking lot.
Well, it it would want to have the parking lot, he's saying, but it'd want to have the entrance and an egress. Who means egress is all.
Just keep traffic flowing.
Yep.
People are trying to get in and out and drop kids off.
For sure. Yeah, and I think the way it's drawn right now, that that would be the reason also for moving it to the other side is you can have an entrance and an exit onto that main driveway versus where it's at right now. It is once you're into that lot, you know, it's kind of a one way in, one way out. So, yep.
Hey, Steve, attending many of my kids' soccer games, tournaments and baseball games. One thing that was really needed during the summertime was shade trees. So I just, it would be nice if you could plant a few shade trees around the field that eventually that will grow up and provide someplace that the parents can duck under during those hot summer days.
Yes, absolutely. I agree with you on that.
Alfonso.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think the bigger project of what we're looking with when we approached Georgia Urban Soccer Park and looking at that space there, this very modular field, this single field we're building. What Urban Soccer Park does is they actually would like you to get two or three of them with the gazebo and with the concession stand.
Sure.
And so the idea blown out, folks, from this point is to produce something in Lansing that would be a destination site for some kids that would want to play soccer in a way that they haven't been able to. And we're trying to and right now we're trying to do it singularly, but I think that's exactly what you're saying and being able to provide the cover.
If you're if you're hoping to have a second field or even a third. If you're, if you're hoping to have a second field or even a third field, you should probably put that in, in, as part of the drawing. In other words, looking down the road, if it's successful and you want to put a second field in, where's that gonna go?
Yes, sir.
Where's the third field gonna go?
Yes, sir.
That would be a ideal here while we're doing it right now initially, I think.
I'd agree with that.
Have to come back in front of us again if you need, if, when you wanted to open up the other field.
Sure. But that, but I mean, in the B, in, in brass tacks, it is at the end of the day to take what Steve and Roger have. And that's usable space that is for the community, really. Enhance it. I mean, Steve, we talk about it all the time. Steve and Roger are guys that have done their part. And it's now the next generation of how we maintain it. And this piece right here is really, we just need to know, folks, tell us how much light we need, how much parking we actually need for a space that we're already using. And we'll do our damnedest and quickest to get this thing up and running because we would love to be able to have this thing grand opened before the end of the summer. Cause we do really feel that it is, it doubles the experience of the folks that are using it right now. It, it doubles. And, and some of this is like, uh, logistics that I didn't know that necessarily we'd have to do. I thought we could just still just come in the way we're doing now, drop the kids off and they just walk onto a different surface. I'm learning that it's a little bit different than that.
Very good. Any other questions?
Did you guys talk about the lights?
If you can give us a rundown, maybe.
Not, not in detail.
Well, are they tunable LEDs? It'll, it will dark sky compliant and they'll just light up the field without glare out onto the highway.
Yeah, correct. I just want to make sure, because I know that was a large concern from you guys. Um, the first time that you had a meeting. So I just want to make sure that we got everything that you guys wanted to see for those.
So CJ, are we going to, um, and we have a letter. Everybody wrote a letter for the DOT. CJ, are we going to vote on anything here?
Uh, well, you certainly can make a recommendation and referral to the town board relative to the use. Uh, so that way they'll, uh, be granted the special use permit, uh, and have that town board portion of it underway. Uh, the thing about doing that is that the town board's, uh, granting of the special permit will likely be contingent on your site plan approval. So, um, it's somewhat of a formality. Um, but that said, there definitely is, um, I would say that the road is definitely the significant concern is the driveway heading back to that building. That building evidently was originally uh, issued a building permit under a U classification rather than assembly, uh, which is how we ended up with, um, a road of that length that that's, that is that narrow, um, serving that area. So DOT, of course, brought that, um, you know, to the forefront as well. Now that said, again, this would be a recommendation of the special use permit to the town board. I don't see why you couldn't make that recommendation night, tonight if you chose to, knowing that, um, you'll probably be doing a little more site plan review, uh, next month. Hopefully, maybe preliminary and final if all of these issues are addressed, but I would certainly invite the applicants to uh, coordinate with me and the fire chief, uh, code enforcement officer to get out there and take those fire vehicles, uh, for a drive, uh, for a test drive on that, that driveway there. Um, cause that's, um, a significant question as far as I'm concerned and as far as DOT, I think is concerned as well, so.
CJ, could I ask? Talking about the driveway going back to the, uh, to the little building?
That's correct.
Do you like to see that widened? Is that what fire department's saying? They'd like to see that widened out also?
Uh, yeah, I think DOT and fire are concerned around obviously being able to turn around a fire rapace, uh, at the terminus of that driveway, which is about, um, I think it's about seven hundred feet back from Perruville Road, maybe a little longer. So it's starting to get to the edge where they need to construct a, a pull-off. So, um, I'm happy to coordinate with the project's landscape architect on, uh, determining the appropriate road width in conjunction with fire and code. Uh, but we'll need to get into definitely some of the details of that before, um, I imagine that this, um, board would want to grant preliminary and final site plan approval.
Okay, so let's.
Recommendation to the town board that they approve the special use permit?
So moved.
Okay.
Is it all in favor? Do we have to have a roll call?
You don't need a roll call for this. Heather can count the hands in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Abstain? Okay, so we recommend how the, um, town board approves the special use permit. And if we straighten up the, the driveway things and make sure that we include the lighting on that sidewalk going back to the bathrooms on a print, I think that we should be able to take care of this at the next meeting. And in the interest, can we do that at the working meeting or do we have to wait for the, uh, following meeting if they get the paperwork in in time, CJ?
Um, so the June town board meeting is on the sixteenth and the planning board working meeting is the fourteenth. I would need, I'd need those complete set of documents turned around by this Thursday, close of business, to be able to appear on the June fourteenth planning board agenda. There's just no time to get it to project review committee otherwise and coordinate with fire and, uh, you know, and so it takes time to do, so.
If y'all can get the, um, the drawings together by this Thursday, this coming Thursday, which is two, three days away. I know that's not easy. Then we can get it on our next meeting. And that'll be before the town board meeting. Otherwise it'll be the meeting afterwards. Um, and then you'll be waiting until the next town board meeting. Is that it, CJ?
Uh, no, so they presumably the, uh, the planning board could do another review perhaps at the meeting on the fourteenth. Even with some sketch materials, you could perhaps grant preliminary site plan approval at that meeting if you felt that the project was headed in an overall good direction. Uh, and then the town board could grant the special permit at their meeting on the sixteenth, followed by a final site plan approval on June twenty-eighth. That,
Okay.
Could be a theoretical timeline, uh, where the submissions to progress in a, a fashion that was acceptable to this board.
I think as a board, we're very interested in seeing you get started as quickly as you can. And we'll help you. We're sure that everything is, all our eyes are dotted and t's are crossed. So if you can get the stuff to us by Thursday, then we can do that in the next meeting. Otherwise you'll go in front of the town or the town board will be taking up the special use permit and we'll finalize everything on our, at our next actual meeting.
Is that, is that June twenty, is that June twenty-eighth, Jerry?
Yeah, either June tenth, the June tenth meeting, if you can get stuff out by Thursday or the June eighth meeting if not.
George, is that something we can get close to possibly?
Yeah, I mean, I, I like what CJ said about, I mean, we can create a different little sketch. Um, it might not be like the architectural drawing for that first one. Um, with just the, the change in, in location for the parking lot. Um, but yeah, we can get something for sure. I know, I know what they're, what, what we're looking to do.
And then making, and then making sure that we have a, and a rendition of that lit path to the bathrooms.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, and it's really, really about widening that access road. That's, and you may have to think, there might be a culvert replacement involved in that. It's, it's probably not going to be cheap, but.
All right, I'm CJ. For the field itself, like why are we, why are we changing the zoning for the building? So the, the field, the, the field or the, the use of that building is not changing with the field going in.
Uh, yeah, so when the building permit was pulled, it was under the auspices of being a utility building, much like the one that's right down in front of the property. And so my understanding though is that this is used as assembly. It's labeled as clubhouse. Um, so that's a public assembly building, which means that, um, there needs to be access for fire, uh, to be able, or emergency vehicles to be able to access that space. And if there are people parked all the way up and down that road, then that becomes an impossibility. So, um, I defer to the fire chief and code, um, officials for what they think is best. So, um, yeah, if there's, um, sketches that you want to send, um, that's helpful. I don't know if I'm making sense, but the DOT definitely flagged it too, so.
Yeah, do you understand, George, that, that the issue here is getting emergency vehicles back to that building in case of an emergency since there are going to be people back there. And
Yep.
Don't want them getting hung up. And if something blocks the road, we want to make sure that there's a way for them to turn around at the end and a way for the park, the road not to be blocked by parked vehicles.
Yep. Got it.
The issue, it's simply safety and, you know, seconds can be somebody's life in that case.
Dean, uh, you were talking about plantings.
Yeah, I think that we'd like to see some plantings along the road. As well as, like you said, where the sidewalk's going to be, how it would be illuminated. Details on the lighting for the field. Um, obviously the new parking lot stuff and this was just discussed, uh, changes to potentially the culvert, but definitely the, the roadway back to the back. So those, those would be all the things that come to mind, I think, that we're looking for. And if, uh, you need to get the fire department out there, certainly the sooner the better.
Yep. You got our list, you got our list, Steve.
I do, but George, you heard that, that, that they're looking for some plantings out in front of the fi, uh, the parking lot or the field.
Yep.
The road, okay.
Yep.
And, and I don't, I don't think for this that we're gonna have time to, we, I haven't thought about where a second or third field would go. I don't think we're gonna.
I think what, but I, I, I heard, I heard them though, that we'd have, we gotta do this all again the next time. We want to expand out that, you know.
Yeah.
Sure. But that ma, it makes sense.
I think you want to get the one in.
For sure.
Um, more questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate you coming and this is a great thing that you're doing, in my opinion.
Good project.
Need more exercise.
Well, thank you for.
Thank you all, gentlemen, ladies. Thank you.
Well, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, addition to the community rec center for the food pantry. At the ice rink, is George here for that?
Uh, yes, we have George and Andy here. I can admit them.
Everybody had a chance to read the resolution? And are there any questions? I think Andy explained it pretty well at the last meeting. Do you or George have a, welcome to the meeting, Andy and, uh, George, do you have any additions that you want to make to, uh, what you've already submitted?
I, I don't think I do. George, any questions with them?
No, unfortunately I was out of town last, so I don't know exactly what Andy said, but, um, the idea is we're gonna do two things. We're gonna give you both, um, in this addition for the food pantry where they can sort food and get stuff. Plus we're gonna redo those wooden dog houses that protect and get more protection for the snow slides there on the west side of the building.
Were we talking about the liquor store? Which one are we talking about?
We're talking about the food pantry.
Food pantry first.
Okay.
Anyone on the board have any questions about, uh, for George or Andrew? Can I hear a resolution on the, uh, preliminary and final site plan approval resolution? I mean, can I hear a motion? On the resolution for preliminary and final site plan?
I'm over accept the resolution.
I second.
All in favor? What, I think we, uh, we have to do a roll call.
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Dale?
Dale, did you say? I'm sorry. Yes.
Yep. Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
By the way, the, the letters did show up, uh, they're dated May twenty-first. Uh, there's a highlighted yellow portion here. So just wanted to let you know. Same with this next resolution.
And now we can talk about the liquor store. Addition. Do you have any questions for George or Andy?
Do they have to get a whole new liquor license to move?
Yes, they do. Yeah.
It'll take forever.
Absolutely. Unfortunately.
Who's moving?
Liberty Liquor.
Liberty, or the one down there by the,
Yep.
Hold the middle of town.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Makes sense.
Get a better location for them.
Definitely.
Lot bigger building to put them, yeah.
Any other answer questions? Again, Andy went through a pretty good last, at the last meeting. You did a good job, George, in your actions.
Well, I'm gonna let him talk for me all the time now.
It's a nice project. It kind of maximizes what's going on at the, uh, at the market already.
Yeah.
Terms of parking and septic and, um, stormwater. So that's nice.
Yeah, we're trading some parking for a building.
And it's so, as far as stormwater is concerned, we really haven't changed it, right? We're still about the same amount of impact.
Yes.
Material.
It might be, there might be a hundred foot of difference. And it'll go off, it's gonna run into that four bay. It'll go off on grade and go to the four bay and go to that spot where it's already draining now.
All right, can I hear a motion? To accept the resolution as written with the dates added to it.
So moved.
Second.
Hey Heather, you want to call the rule?
Just to clarify, who got, who seconded?
Take your pick, about three of us.
I think Dale.
All right. Okay, Sandy?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Tom, oh, Tom?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Jerry, can I ask CJ a question real quick?
Yep.
CJ, have you heard anything about a dollar or family dollar store being considered between Lansing Station Road and the firehouse on Route forty-four B?
Uh, my understanding is there may be some soil testing. I ha, I don't have any details on the project, but it's possible. I don't know if they have site control yet.
Okay.
I don't have any pending applications, no.
I, I think the town's gotta really address this issue because basically it's getting out of hand.
Just, just so you know, their, uh, business plan calls for a five-mile grid for their stores, one every five mile in every direction.
Yep, yep. We, we, we're always surrounded now as it is with any more. Can, can the zoning be changed for our rate to a little retail, let's say thousand square feet, the maximum thousand square feet?
That, I don't know. Um, it would have to be discussed. We'd have to, uh, Um, it would have to be discussed. We'd have to uh have to be brought up and be discussed. Um, there are ramifications.
This way you protect the homegrown businesses, local businesses, but the avoid basically these national chains coming in and building huge projects.
But it would also affect liquor stores. I mean, any of these small, any of the small. In other words, we can't just identify certain built businesses that could or couldn't win.
I'm saying the retail.
The whole business and not just certain name brands.
No, we don't just say retail business, Jerry, not not name brands, retail businesses.
That's something that certainly could be brought up.
We're definitely looking at uh potential zoning changes, especially along the um scenic highway. So there's, there's a potential for a moratorium along there for uh retail or commercial. But that's something you need to talk to Doug and Joe about.
Is Joe still, I sent Joe, Doug, copy the emails. Joe still on the meeting also?
Yep.
I am here and listening.
So you're informed also, Joe, thanks.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You're down informed also. I didn't have your email address.
I wonder if they're gonna put a five G antenna in each one.
What?
Never mind. All right, on to the next uh.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item would be the cubic cliffs. Minor subdivision. Land trust.
Should we admit them?
Did we do the short environmental assessment form last time?
We sure read a lot of those last night I was at.
We might have a couple more to read tonight. Does anybody remember if this was one of them, this was on the meeting or on the agenda last time, wasn't it?
I don't remember.
Well, let's read D eleven just to make sure. Are we doing a neck deck tonight or declaration? Yeah, and preliminary and final minor subdivision approval, so hopefully everyone's read the uh the resolution.
I I've got a question, if I could, Jerry.
Go ahead, Al.
Well, I I I see in the packet, there's a letter from the Department of Assessment saying that there's land um that the Sim Zone on between the railroad and the lake. So is that that point in the land there, is that going to be included in the land to the um Finger Lakes Land Trust? And if not, then that'll be created, it'll create a separate parcel.
I think that's owned by the railroad, right?
No, that we've got a letter in the packet saying no.
Yeah. Yeah.
You follow what I'm saying here is that if if the land trust doesn't take possession of the lands west of the railroad between the railroad and the lake, then that will create an additional tax parcel. It's part of the subdivision, which we haven't looked at. We're looking at it as a.
Yeah, the drawing doesn't show that it's taking that.
Uh, I don't see that letter, Al.
Now I saw.
I have it in my packet from Department of Assessment.
Yeah, it may not be in the online packets, but.
And I never got a packet, so.
It's in the paper packets, because did it only just come in? No? It's dated February second.
Yeah, it's old. It's an old letter, actually, I just happened to dig up from the the records. Uh, the applicant is here, uh so they could address this.
Uh, now, are we clear? Did we do the uh short environmental form at the last meeting?
I don't think we did for this project.
I don't think so, because it's included in this packet.
Right. But um is there, Al, is there a problem with creating a separate tax parcel?
Well, then it would be a three lot subdivision as opposed to a two lot, what we're doing now, correct?
Correct.
And also that point would be landlocked then if if it wasn't conveyed to the land trust. So to me, the way to solve this is that the deed to the land trust should include some type of phrase that said quit claiming or including any lands located between the railroad and the uh lake would be conveyed to the land trust.
Makes sense, Al.
Yeah, follow CJ when I'm.
Yeah, and the the applicant may be able to address this. Um, I'm.
Yeah, let's bring them in.
But that's certainly a plat notation uh that that we can require.
Yeah, it looks like there's a couple docks, plus a dock in the cottage to the north, plus that point to the south.
Hey all, how are you?
Hi.
Good.
Good. So I was, I was listening, um and I'm happy to try to answer about the lakeshore questions. Um, so we would not be creating another lot. Uh, the the property we are under contract to purchase from the Sims includes all lands and um with TG Miller, when drawing the survey, it was a question of how they should draw it since the lands as currently utilized. Um, the railroad has been managing it as they own the property and the Sims family hasn't really been utilizing um those properties for some years. But as you can see from that letter that that we provided for you, uh, the title to the property does include the lands west of the railroad. Um, so uh while there's no plans to utilize those lands for any public access elements, uh, you know, when we open the nature preserve, there won't be creation of a of a third lot in this case.
Right, so so your deed, the deed that comes to the land trust should include some sort of phrase that says that the lands west of the railroad are included in the transfer of the.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be included in the legal description.
Okay, that's all I've worked. That way, there won't be another parcel created by the assessment office if that that phrase is included in the uh D transfer.
Correct.
Okay.
And and TG Miller, the plan was, you know, they drew the the simpler line along the rail line and then included, it says includes riparian rights rather than kind of drawing everything west. Uh, it's kind of can cause some confusion, but I can understand why why that would would bring up a question on your end.
Okay, all right, good.
There's no, um, from the land trust, um, there's no access to these points, is there? Like, is this slope too steep that you could not even get to the lake? Is that correct?
Yeah, it 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 is steep, so there won't be any uh any trail coming from thirty four B would would stay up on the cliffs.
Okay.
And there's no way to bring a boat in and decide that you want to go try to walk the um the trail unless you're a mountain climber?
Yeah.
Because they're pretty steep cliffs, I think.
CJ, the resolution will have to be changed to match that, won't it? To mention that specifically in the resolution.
Uh, the portion that Al was um speaking about, um, well, uh, what amendments would be have to be made to the map? Uh, I guess that would be my question, if any.
Well, if we're, if we're taking, if we're taking the map literally, it, uh, the the map doesn't say a darn thing about the land west of the railroad tracks. Because it's not shaded, and it's not, uh, there's not even a note on there including it in the transaction. And that's what Al's referring to.
It would seem that um as you look at the map where it says parcel A, um, it should also include the lakefront area that's shown to the west there where it says lakefront area point four four acres should say that that's included in parcel A and that area should be shaded in some way as well.
Yeah, because parcel A specifically right now says area east of the railroad. So right now, the area west of the railroad isn't, isn't included.
Well, actually, it does say in the notes. It says, see note seven. So note seven, lakefront parcel to be conveyed to Finger Lakes Land Trust, Inc. And to include any right title or interest in the lands westerly of the lands reputedly owned by the railroad to low water line of the lake. Um, but it should, but it should specifically say that it is part of parcel A.
Okay, um, yeah, that's a max. Uh, if you can ask TG Miller to add that to the subdivision plat, they're gonna be stamping uh uh, they're gonna be somebody gray seal versions for the chairs to sign or the one of the chairs to sign, so um, they can certainly add that language.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Is there any other questions or comments? Sandy? You have the short environmental assessment form in front of you. Can you read it for us?
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use or zoning regulations?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in the change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that causes establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No. Will the proposed action results in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure of mass transit biking or walkway?
Nope.
No.
Small.
Small, I mean, one way, I guess, right? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies?
No.
Public and private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quantity of important art historic, historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the natural resources? Um, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater air quality for or from?
No.
Oh.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
It's my understanding that the um the culvert's already been replaced, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it uh I sent, at the last minute, I sent a photo to CJ um of the culvert replacement and then the town also asked for um, a widening of a turnaround at the end of the the Sims family driveway. The gravel has been delivered, but the grading uh has not yet been completed for that.
So that will still continue to be a contingency. But the um if everybody's read the uh resolution, can I hear a uh motion to accept it as written with the contingencies in place?
So moved. Back with. Well, what about the modification that the uh the inclusion of the land west of the railway is going to be clarified?
Would you like to just add that as the revision date for what TG Miller is gonna send?
Yes.
Okay.
And you've got a head to date for the letter?
Two thirty nine.
Yes, that was received and uh it was the same uh sentiments about. Uh, it did not have any negative uh intercommunity uh impacts, so sa- similar letters to the other.
You have a first?
Second.
Second, and it's Al.
Dale, now.
Dale and now.
Sandy?
Have to read the roll.
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
I'm Jerry.
I'll have one.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Get ready to go. And our next item up is Asbury and Collin Road. We've got a secret here too, or a environmental impact form, yep, environmental assessment form.
TG, I had a question last time about stormwater on these and the other lots. What did you find out about that?
Did you?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, in fact, Larry raised that today also. Um, and there's uh I believe some basic notes on it in the project review uh committee uh minutes, but the short of the long is that um, the town's engine, stormwater engineer has recommended that a plat notation be included on both respective subdivisions, if we're talking about the Wilson Road as well as the Asbury and Collins um subdivisions that um uh indicates that future subdivisions will be treated as common plan of development and thus uh subject to uh stormwater.
Stormwater.
Review. So that was uh Donnie's recommendation. Um, that said, if the board uh would like more information, I'm certainly happy to um have Donnie and Lynn uh, you know, speak to the board further.
Okay, the the proposed lots, stormwater's not gonna come into play. It's any future subdivision, then it will come into play.
Correct.
That's my understanding. Yes, an applicant for, oh, um, are we on Wilson Road?
No, we're on Esbury and Collins.
I thought we were on Wilson.
Oh, which one are we on?
We have not been the Wilson Road.
Oh, we are on Wilson, okay.
Esbury and Collins.
We're on Esbury and Collins.
No, we're on Wilson Road.
No, we're on Esbury and Collins.
He's the chairman, he gets to say where we are.
No worries. Um, applicant is here um for Asbury and Collins uh to speak about the project if you'd like to hear more, but uh yes, these uh minor subdivisions are analogous in that they uh both uh do not cross the threshold for full SWIP and thus the stormwater engineer has recommended that a plat notation follow the subdivisions, yes.
I apologize to everybody. I put my paperwork in the wrong order, but we're on Asbury and Collins.
Algy accepted.
So are they here? Are you bringing them in?
Uh, yes, I can admit them.
Hello, Jesse?
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Pretty good. So we have, uh, do you have anything to add to what you were telling us about last meeting?
I don't think so. Um, yeah, I think there was a little bit of a miscommunication maybe on my part last week and you know, we're not planning on building anything. We're, we're just looking to subdivide these lots and then sell each one of them. And I I think I did mention that I have a potential buyer for one of the lots already and uh. And, uh, she's basically waiting for this subdivision to happen and then we'll, we'll go ahead and sell it to her most likely. Um. She's acting like she wants a bigger lot than we're currently talking about though, so. What I'm hoping I might do if, assuming she, she does follow through and, and buys it as well. Do a lot line modification and, uh, basically extend the lot that she wants into the area that she, she'd like, uh, once that's done. Um, but I, I don't know for sure that that's gonna happen at this point. Uh, I just wanted to give the, the board a, uh, a heads up about that.
If it does happen, CJ, can that be, um, dealt with in your office or will I have to come back before the board?
Uh, generally speaking, we can do, uh, lot line adjustments that do not exceed an acre in gross.
So in other words, if she's not adding more than an acre. Then they can handle it right in the, in the office instead of bringing it before the board again.
Okay, I, I think it would be about exactly an acre. Um. She, she's looking for two acres, but she doesn't want the two that we're subdividing right now.
Of course, it'd be too easy.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Actually, Dean, now that, you know, I've got you on the computer here, um. You know, if we're doing a lot line modification for, for her, if you still were interested in doing one, uh, uh, for your piece as well, you know, we can certainly talk about that too.
Okay.
Yeah, anyone else have questions for Jesse? All right, Dale, do you have the en- environmental assessment form in front of you?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't, no.
Okay, Al, could you read it?
Sure.
Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
Minor.
Yeah.
Small impact, right? Okay, no. Three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No.
Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment? Of a critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or. Effect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to. Incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Seven, will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies?
No.
No.
Small.
Yeah.
Small. B, public, private wastewater treatment utilities.
No.
No.
Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological? Architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example wetlands? Water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna?
No.
No.
Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Jesse, you understand that the, um. The two acre, um. Subdevelopment here, the rest of the land will have to come with a stormwater plan if you develop it further. Any more that's developed will need a stormwater plan and that'll probably be written right on the plat, so it goes with the deeds.
Yes, I'm aware of that and, uh, you know, we're, you know, seriously considering jumping into that next, next part. Soon, you know, we keep reading these articles about a shortage of building lots and, uh. Uh, you know, it may be a good time to actually. Get started on the next, next phase of this, so we'll, we'll probably be back, you know, in a, you know, in a, another month or two with a, with a plan for you.
Good. Very good. Can I hear a, um. A motion to accept the, uh, resolution as.
Oh, we have to do a neg deck first, don't we?
Do the neg deck first? That's part of the resolution, of course.
We can combine them, okay.
I think CJ takes it that way.
I move the resolution and the negative declaration.
I think Guy likes more.
I'll second it.
And Heather, would you read the roll?
Sandy? Dale?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
There you go, Jesse.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
We'll see you next month.
All right.
And now we'll go to the Wilson Road minor subdivision. We have another short environmental assessment form. Are they here, CJ?
Um, I do not see the applicants here.
You don't think there's any new information? And we've got the neg deck and preliminary and final minor subdivision and again. This will have the notation on the plat that the anymore. Um, dividing of the land is going to cause a, um. Stormwater. Procedure. Dean, do you wanna read the environmental assessment form this?
I'm doing this all on, online, so.
Hey, I'll read it. Will the proposed act create a material conflict with the adopted use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in, in the use or intensity of the land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No. No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a CEA, critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit? Biking or walkway?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation? Or renewable energy opportunities?
Yeah.
Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies?
No.
No.
Public, private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies? Groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
It seems to me that we had some, did we discuss drainage problem, drainage tiles under this land? And was there a chance? For it to drain, if those tiles are interrupted for it to drain onto other properties?
Uh, we did. I believe both times. Now, the problem was that the people that have the lots to the west. Were really concerned that they'd get a lot of the water. And at the time, we pointed out when we're. Told there was gonna be a stormwater plan, uh, we explained to them that the stormwater plan would take care of that. But now there's not gonna be a stormwater plan until the, uh, further development goes on. Which, by the way, CJ, do, uh, for this one and the last one, do we have to mention that in, in the resolution? Or in the motion to make sure that those notes get added to the drawing?
Uh, yeah, so, um, board, uh, hopefully. Will note that, uh, in the resolutions, condition C, uh, under the resolution, the, the final. Resolved clause does, um, indicate on both and so will not accept the final plats without that notation. Um, on it for signing and filing. Um, that said, the same deal applies here if the planning board wishes to hear more from. The town's stormwater engineer, stormwater management officer about, uh, this particular configuration. I'm happy to have them come in and, and speak to you at the next meeting.
Okay, I'm, I'm missing where that's written in this resolution.
Page two.
Conditions, C, then was it two C?
Two C.
I think so.
Okay, I've got it, yes.
Yeah.
It all.
Yeah, and it's also.
It shows up on the map as well in the lower left-hand corner. Condition of subdivision, subdivision approval.
Okay. I didn't go over that far. Yes.
So we're pretty sure. I mean. At two hundred and thirty feet between the property line of proposed parcel one and the. Uh, western property line of, uh. Parcel three, where it's going to go to Cynthia A. and Cornelius Davis. Were they the ones that were concerned with the water? And any impermeable surfaces here likely to be. Um. Slowed down, the wa- any water flow be slowed down across that two hundred and thirty feet? And sink into the ground?
That land is pretty flat there.
So it is, everything running very, in, very quickly or in any direction.
Yeah.
The flows to the ditch, that ditch is pretty big.
That's true.
I would assume.
Ditches seem bigger these days.
Yeah, I would assume that any development is gonna try to drain towards the ditch as well.
Yep.
Well, there is also a drainage on the property line. To the north.
It's true. All right, does anybody have any more questions or concerns? And I hear a motion to accept this, uh. Resolution as written with the neg deck preliminary and finals minor subdivision. Approval?
So moved.
Second.
Tom and Dean? Heather, would you like to read the roll?
Andy?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
So the Hillcrest one that came before us a while ago. Evidently, we've had some gore stuff sold and. And. That property in the back now has access. Even though I think it's a flag lot. Do we have anybody here for this one?
Uh, yes, uh, we'll just.
We can bring them in if they have any. Anything to add?
Hello, Ed?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, do you have anything to add to the, um. Information you've already given us?
No, I thank the board for considering the application.
Well, thank you for being here via computer from wherever you might be. Does anybody have any questions for him? Any concerns about the property? I think we went through this pretty good last time. Very good. Do we wanna read through the short environmental? Larry, have you got that in front of you or are you on the computer too with it?
I'm on the, I'm on, I've got it on the computer here, but all I gotta do is go to it, so hang on just a second.
Down near the bottom.
Yep, I found it. It's all the way down there. Okay, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of use of land?
No.
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 Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the es- establishment of a critical environmental area? Or CEA?
No.
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 Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affected existing infrastructure for mass transit? Hiking or walkway, biking or walkway?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate and reasonably available energy conservation? Or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Yeah.
Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies?
Nope.
No.
Or B, public or private wastewater utilities?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse changes to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies? Groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase to the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
So, has everybody read the resolution?
Yep.
Are there any questions about it? Again, we're including the neg, neg deck. The, uh, preliminary and final mi- minor subdivision approval all in the same resolution.
Was, was that little piece of separate tax parcel where the road was, has that been merged or consolidated?
It's consolidated with a tie line, should be on the map, yes.
Uh, it has been consolidated, okay.
Any other questions? I hear a motion to accept the resolution as written.
So moved. Second.
Tom and Dean? Heather, would you like to read the roll?
Sandy? Dale?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tom? Tom.
Yes.
And Jerry.
Yes. Very good, so we finally got it through.
Thank you, board.
Well, thank you. And, uh, that's a nice decent property.
Thank you, it really is, thank you very much.
Have a good day. Through the discussion items. Rabbito. And the only thing that I see here from Rabbito is the tank design. Were we looking for something to keep the water from flowing out of this, the, uh. Site out of the stormwater pond if in fact it was on fire?
Uh, applicants are here and can speak to the project also, um. We received an update at site plan on Friday morning, but obviously could not make it into the packet in time. So I could admit them if you'd like to hear more.
Was that the, uh, change to underground tanks, or was that before that?
Well, let's bring the applicant in and we'll.
Sorry, I missed.
Question.
The question.
Wa- was that the change to, uh, to underground tanks, or was that previous to?
Uh, I believe so, but I honestly haven't even looked at it yet. We were pretty steeped in trying to get everything together, together for this meeting, so. Um, hold on just a moment.
The underground tanks are new. Compared to the last meeting.
Yeah, and Deb was asking for, or saying that we're used to seeing more prints, and. I thought that there was a pretty obvious consensus that we were all looking for, um, of. A more complete set of drawings.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hello.
Do we, any, uh. Any more discussion or anything you wanna add to the project?
Well, in, in the intervening time, um, Rabbito has decided to, um. Basically put all the tanks underground. So we're not putting anything above ground as far as the tank structures go. All fueling, loading, unloading will be from underground storage tanks.
That's not the LP, that's the additional tanks, correct?
Correct, the LP is off the table. Um, so we're just, we're just talking about petroleum bulk storage at this point.
Yep.
Okay, and the fact that they're underground, Wayne, does that now change the, uh. Regulation for the spacing between the tank area and the, uh, uh, filling frame that the, uh. Consultant was talking about?
I. I don't know of any change, um, I mean, Rabbito has, uh, I. I don't know if you got a copy of the site plan that was sent.
Yeah.
A- and basically, we're just showing where the, the new, the loading rack is gonna be, um, shown, and that's where. That's where the small trucks will come in and receive fuel. And then there's.
I believe in the last meeting, we talked about that, our alternate means of a barrier between the loading rack and the tank, where we're talking about the walls. Now we have a barrier with not only dirt, but a concrete on top of the tanks, so we meet that barrier now.
That was my question, if, if that was considered, man, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't seen, just so you two know, we haven't seen your new drawings because they came in too late to be dispersed to us. Um. But I think we'll be able to see them certainly before the next meeting.
There wa- there was a concern about the view from, uh, Pruville Road. And the, 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 uh, vaults or the enclosures were going to, um. Be high enough in the, in the prior plan to, to, uh, screen that off, so will you be adding a fence now if they're gonna be underground? Those vaults are not gonna be there, correct?
That's correct.
So will you be adding like a six-foot? Privacy fence along that, that, what would be that, the southern line?
I believe a fence was already shown around that at the last meeting, the last site plan included. A fence around that area.
Okay.
And in fact, the building will do a lot to screen the existing petroleum propane tanks from.
Right.
Correct.
So it sounds to me like we're making very good headway here.
Can I ask a question, cuz I, I don't know anything about tanks underground or anything like that, so. Um, I'm assuming they're like the gas station tanks, they're specially made and they're supposed to be underground and they have to be checked and all of that, is that correct?
That's correct. Yep, these meet the same requirements, they have to have continuous leak detection, so there would be centers in the double wall space if there was ever a breach from the inside of the outside. We would immediately know of it, it has leak detection systems in, in the piping areas, so it's, it's a very thorough system, and there is required testing. By the New York State D C and the federal government every year, you have to do certain tests to prove that the entire system's tight and there's no compromise anyplace.
Okay, good, thank you.
First blush, that seems to have taken care of, that's a good idea, it seems to have taken care of most of the, uh. Objections that people in the town had with this.
And, and just so you know, we normally don't do underground at our bulk plants, not because of any safety reasons, but. The, the New York State D E C, if we have above-ground tanks and we realize. We weren't using as much product as we want, we could take that tank and we can move it someplace else and be permitted to do that, and underground tank is. Once it's underground, you can't take it out, even if you could prove it's safe, so. It's not that this is less safe or we were going a different means, it's just the fact that sometimes we plug and play and this is a hundred percent permanent, if anything goes wrong. That tank goes to the scrapyard.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that, but this seems to ameliorate a lot of the problems that, uh, were brought up.
Sure, sure, that, we took a step back, we said, what, what can we do? I said, well, the safest route here is you put it totally underground, it. It's encased in dirt everywhere with a concrete top on it, I mean, there's nothing exposed anymore, there's no impact zones, if. A meteor come out of the atmosphere and there's no im- you know, it's just all around the safest plan.
Yep.
One of the things you'll see in the updated site plan is that in the loading rack. And in the transport pad area, which the transport pad is used by the larger trucks to fill the tanks. Uh, there's a, a catch basin in the middle of each of those pads, and those, if there's ever any. Uh, catastrophic loss of fuel, they would go right into a, an underground oil-water separator, there's a. Planned four thousand gallon underground water separator. That would, uh, is first of all controlled by an outlet valve, so that if there is a catastrophic loss of fuel, it goes and is contained in that. Tank, and then, um, if there's, um, i- if it has to be released, it can be turned open by a valve and it would. Go right into the stormwater for bay and be contained in that area, so there's. A couple of measures to control for any fuel that would be lost, um, from getting off.
Outside the system, that's correct.
Yeah, that sounds like the answer or the solution to almost everything that was brought up. Is there any other questions for these gentlemen?
I just wanna say, looking at the site plan from May, that's in our packet, um. It's nice to see the miscellaneous small propane tank storage area. Um. You know, delineated there, it's nice to see the, you know, the, the propane filling area fencing, kinda really well delineated. And the additional, um, protecting bollards there, I think is, is a huge improvement as well, so. That's all good stuff, thank you.
All right. CJ, where do we go from here on this project?
Uh, so, from here, we received, uh, the updated site plan on Friday, and so this will go to project review committee. Uh, next Thursday, uh, morning, the, uh, June third. And, um, they'll turn around comments to us hopefully pretty quickly and then time, um, for your next meeting. So, that's kind of the update I have at this point.
Are we in a position where we'll have resolutions for them at the next meeting, do you think? Do we have all the information we need?
Well, it's really up to this board, um, whether you have the information that you want, um, I had heard a request for a bit more robust plan sets. But I don't know if that's still the case, or if you're satisfied with this, um, existing, uh, S one.
I have not seen what you received on Friday, so I'm assuming that that has. A plan set that's approved, or, uh, approved by everybody.
Uh, well, uh, it was included in the digital packet, so the one that was attached to the email, but it obviously, it couldn't make it into your prints because we packed up the printed applications, obviously before. Um, on Friday morning, but it is in the PDF, it's inserted in there, um, so I had, um, asked, um. Uh, the applicant to consider, uh, submitting, uh, a, a plan set with a, a bit more detail such as, you know. Utilities on a separate page and, um, erosion sediment control and. And perhaps a detailed drive plan and, and separating out the landscaping and lighting, but if the board is satisfied with what they're seeing. Um, thus far, then of course, um, you would move into determination of environmental significance. Uh, and possibly preliminary, uh, at least preliminary approval, perhaps, so site plan approval, maybe preliminary and final approval.
Larry, you and Dean are looking at the electronic versions, do you see anything, do you see that we need more information?
Well, I was. What's there, uh, and take, putting in context with Wayne's comments about, uh. Uh, about the, uh, additional plans requested. Uh, a lot of that detail that was missing before has been added to this plan. Um, Dean?
I think other than the updated plan here, the only other thing that I would potentially be looking for. We've seen some elevations of the buildings, it would be nice to see that incorporated in a, um, a south elevation. Because that's, that's the one that we're getting certainly, um, the most exposure to the public. Uh, and the residences that are close by is on that south property line, it'd be nice to see what that entire south elevation will look like. With the fence in place and the buildings in place.
Yeah, particularly with the fence, because we've received comments from the public that, that, uh. The spruce plantings that are there certainly are doing much to, uh. Uh, well, they're not really doing what they were originally intended to do according to the people that live on the other side of the road.
Of course, they're still young.
Exactly, they better grow in more, that's all.
They're, they're young, but th- there was a forest in front of those trees when they're planted, so. Now that's gone.
Well, we don't know, we didn't own that property either, so we can't, we can't speak to that.
But the plant, the trees will do the job at some point, but the, uh, a fence would, the fence would, uh. It would be good for us to see the elevation there. If you could throw together a quick elevation, it shows the building and the tanks behind it. And the, uh, fence and the, the, uh, trees at their present height. That would be good before the next meeting, actually, we'd have to get it in pretty quickly in order to get it into the next meeting, I think. Because dissemination takes time.
Uh, procedurally, is there, um, another public hearing required, or, um. Or is there gonna be comments that come from the county or the town engineer or the code enforcement officer that. We need to react to or respond to before the next meeting?
CJ, do you have an answer for that?
Uh, yeah, and so that's why I mentioned that you'd wanna get us updated drawings by the twenty-seventh, um, for their review. So, yes, we'd be hoping to refer the full set of plans, any remaining documentation to county planning, and of course, have them. Uh, like, provide a response, and then, of course, that may also, um. Uh, warrant additional, um, uh, changes to the site plan, so. Um, I would anticipate perhaps a determination of environmental significance by this board and perhaps preliminary approval at the next meeting. Um, but it's really, it's, it's really up to them, so.
Yeah, I'm assuming that we want the fire department to review this latest round of revisions as well.
I mean, I just got them on Friday morning, so.
I, uh, I do have a question for Wayne. Uh, Wayne, the brochure, uh, showing the, uh, the tank details, uh, that was intended to, to, uh. Suit CJ's request for, uh, cross-sections of the tanks and detailed, uh. Uh, tank placement, uh, or tank placement details. Is that, was that your intention?
Uh, basically, that was to, um, show you what type of tank is going to be installed out there.
Okay, well, my question then to CJ, CJ, your original request for cross-sections of the tanks. Does the, do those, uh, does that brochure solve that or answer that for you?
I'll, I'll send all of the updated plans, will go to the third-party fire protection engineer, I don't even begin to. Have the slightest clue about most of this equipment, so, uh, any documentation will be sent on, uh, onto Tim DeRusso.
Okay.
For that evaluation.
Yeah, basically, for, for everybody else, if you're looking at CJ's letter of, uh. Uh, April twenty-ninth, that's the list that I'm referring to, the, the additional details. That she requested, and it looks like this one plan has a lot of that information in it. If anybody else wants to take a look at that and compare it to the plan, if you have anything to, to add or, uh, talk about, if you could get that back to CJ. That would probably help.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the building permit will take care of, you know, the miscellaneous issues like the. Um, design of the, the dead man concrete anchors and the, the tank straps and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, I would think that we would be in a position to. To, um, if everything is coming in correctly, we'd be in a pre- position to do a preliminary acceptance in a neck deck or a, uh. Environmental. Survey at the next, uh, meeting. Does that answer your question, Wayne?
Essentially, I mean, we're, Rabbito's, you know, had this on the table for six months and they would like to get, you know, at least a. Some kind of vote out of the thing here before too long, that the project itself hasn't changed, and, and when it's changed, it's been to accommodate the. Requests of the public and of the board, and.
We can take longer if you really want us to.
We'll try to get you going at the next meeting.
That would be outstanding.
So to be clear, it would be good to see that, uh, south elevation.
Yeah, well, we'll try and come up with something here in the next day or so, so we can get it to CJ, um.
Thank you.
She needs it sooner rather than later, because all this stuff takes a long time to get out.
Right, yeah.
And all of us have to study it, and we want an expert, somebody besides us, to look at it and give us some advice on it too. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I hope you have a good evening.
Yes.
You too.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys, about that comment, I'm just a little tired of being snark pack.
All your fault, Larry.
Your Davis and Mr. Bill here.
Uh, I've had Mr. Davis here, I did speak with Tim on the phone, uh, this afternoon, he was traveling, so, hold on just a moment.
Hello, Floyd.
Hello there.
So do you have any new information? So do you have any new information on this project?
I don't have anything new. I believe that uh, Tim and CJ and Dondy have been in communication. I believe that we're currently waiting to hear something from Dondy regarding the revised drawings. Is that your understanding? CJ?
Okay.
Uh, my understanding is that um, well, what I sent this afternoon, um, I think. I sent you a message about this. Um, which was that apparently Tim and Dondy had a conversation back in mid. April about this. Um, and apparently he confirmed with him over the phone that the March twenty twenty SWIP was current. And so I just confirmed all that in writing um, this afternoon. Cause I was uh, as of the project review committee meeting on March sixth. Um, we did speak about this project at the meeting, at which point um, Dondy did indicate that he had not received. Um, comment response to that October twenty nineteen letter. Yes, okay. Uh, Dondy's comment was the applicant must respond to comments dating to October twenty nineteen letter, so. That's all I've got so far.
Okay, the me, it's, I'm not sure if there was some confusion because it was, everything was resubmitted and, and the drawings. Were updated to address the, the previous comments that came from TG Miller dated October twenty eighth, twenty nineteen. I, I believe that all that, all those uh. Revisions were incorporated in the updated drawings. Actually, those drawings were, according to Tim, they were submitted in March of twenty twenty, but. Something fell through the cracks. I'm not sure where that happened, but. Um, at, at this point, I believe that Dondy and Tim are straight in terms of what's been rectified and what, what is. Currently uh, under review.
Uh, yeah, so I just forwarded the planning board the correspondence that originated with Scott Freiberger when we sent around the. Uh, declaration of lead agency uh, notice for the major subdivision. Uh, so Scott Freiberger has asked expecting plans and then I responded to your question Floyd on. April twentieth about this and uh, yeah, so um, that was a comment from Dondy. I don't, I don't have any updates, but. I did email him this afternoon and uh, hopefully he'll let me know if he needs anything new.
Great.
But it is true CJ that they have re- reapplied since twenty nineteen. We started over on this project, didn't we, after that?
Uh, yep. You got it. That's correct. And my understanding is that um, uh, Dondy's comments stood. Um, as of the October twenty nineteen letter, which was, I guess, actually from October twenty sixteen, but then he just crossed that out and put a new date on it. So, uh, but it may be some confusion about the plan set, but I. I think Dondy's got everything that he needs, but I'll certainly be happy to check in with him again. I did just, like I said, email him this afternoon, so.
The, the twenty nineteen date is correct. I don't know why it had twenty sixteen on there, but those, if you recall, we met at the site CJ. And that was uh, prior to that, to that uh, letter. So, but the twenty nineteen is correct.
Mm-hmm, so whatever the towns, you know, I met with Dondy about this project, like I said, on May sixth. Um, and so he indicated that his past comments still stood and as I indicated, I did email him again today and. Um, so, yeah.
So you've emailed him today to um, tell him that the project was resubmitted and reapplied and that his comments were. Taken were addressed in the new submission?
Uh, so he's well aware of the project, um, so. You know, he regularly attends project review committee meetings and um, provides um, feedback on projects, so. My understanding is that his October twenty nine comments stand. But again, um, I did ask him uh, to uh. Take a look at the drawings and make sure that all of the plan submittals, because they do have different dates on them. Um, so I did just clarify with him today and I'm happy to forward this correspondence to um, the board. But, yeah, bye.
So it's present time of waiting for Dondy to, to respond to you.
It's my understanding that the ball is in Dondy's court at this time.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering about. Uh, I'm hearing from CJ that what Dondy said last October stands. But you're saying that new drawings have addressed the, his issues.
Correct. So the drawings were dated March twenty twenty and according to Tim, they were submitted to the planning board at that time, but. That was at the beginning of the pandemic and somehow there was some, I'm not sure the details of what went wrong, but. Uh, remember in, in February, we submitted, we submitted everything new, so the, the submission, it's my understanding. Addressed all of those earlier comments. From, from the previous year. And, and that they were going to Dondy's for review.
Well, we certainly can clarify that.
If there, if there's something that Dondy's waiting for, it would be good to find out because I know that Dondy and T- and uh, Tim have been in communication. It would be surprising to me that he's, he'd be waiting for something at this time.
Did you let us know the score at our uh, working meeting CJ?
Uh, sure, so I just also forwarded the planning board my correspondence uh, on this, which goes back to. Uh, Dondy's January fifth letter. Um. That was updated, which essentially reflects his comments ten twenty eight, twenty nineteen. And then him checking in with Tim, asking if those are the most uh, recent documents. He asked for confirmation that those are the latest documents and. Um, that's the last I heard of it and. I'll, I'll tell you what I know. This is what I know, so.
So we'll expect clarification from Dandy as to whether those comments are still. Um, active or whether they've been addressed in the prints in the news set. All right, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks very much.
Does anyone else have any question? Let me get that out first. Nope, I think we're good. Thank you Floyd.
Great, thank you very much.
And metal brook apartments and landscaping. Just Scott. More. This is the one where he's moving the building and it was over the. The um, water main. CJ, do we have new uh? Information on this?
Um, we ju- we do have a markup, uh, so this was also reviewed at project review committee on the sixth. And um, we did uh, receive markups from the town engineers. Who I believe superimposed the sketch of the new buildings onto the prior utility plan. Uh, so that's that one with the orange boxes. So it's photos of the orange boxes. Oh, and uh, George um, is here, uh, I believe to speak about the project, so. I could admit him.
Okay, I'm back.
Hey George.
Hello, I got Scott with me too, so.
All right. So do you have any new information for us?
Well. You've got, you've got a, um, as Dean asked, you've got a much more delineated. Um, plan and elevation showing the buildings. Basically, the three buildings mimic what's there already. Um, so if we start with the one up front. The fifty by eighty equipment storage building, oh. I guess Scott and I have been talking and all the buildings are going on what's currently impervious. We've got two differing opinions from TG Miller. We have one opinion that came from Sabrina, whatever her name. She basically said. You're putting impervious buildings on impervious surface. No stormwater needs to be done. You need to do. Erosion control during construction, but that's fine. Then Dondy brought up some stuff basically saying, well, where these were, they weren't in the original stormwater thing. But they're still on impervious surface and he doesn't say we need to do it. He's just questioning. And so our first question is, what's the answer? Because all three buildings are going on something that's hard gravel. I've been out there in the pouring rain. The water's running off, you know, it's no different than if it was blacktop. Um. So what we did do is the building, the fifty by eighty equipment storage building, I did put in like a um. Right now that water just runs into the grass, but we put in a, a, a store, or a rain, rain garden area that would act. You know, give a lot more than what's there now. The buildings in the back, our original assumption, Scott remembered fifty feet. He thought that was the overall. Um, easement. Turns out that's half the easement. But we can move that building, but there's eighteen or nineteen feet between the garbage building and the storage building. So a fire truck can still come through there. Uh, Dondy was worried about the fire trucks maintaining uh, down that road. It still can be done, but the ultimate thing still comes down to. What is the determination says we're not increasing um, runoff from what it already is. And I don't know who answers that question.
Is that a store, is that up to us CJ or is that a stormwater officer?
So the question is to um. Clarify what portions of the site are included and not included in the ground disturbance.
No, I mean, that, the, 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 um, for the duplexes. All the duplexes are in, were taken care of with the stormwater and then part of what I sent. Was I sent Wayne's original thing that showed the stormwater calks that really did all the duplex units. The shop has always been on a hard surface.
Basically, the, basically the parking lots have been grandfathered, I mean, over the years. So there's no stormwater on them essentially. I mean, the back ones are kind of caught by the oversized duplex project because of the way. The elevations worked, it's actually over calculated built the way that it was calculated. But the question is, is that we're not adding more impervious area because we're on impervious area. And if anything, the water quality would actually improve because the buildings, obviously the metal roof is cleaner water than. Say gravel or tre- or something, whatever might be on the parking lot that would be shedding off too. And so the question that I have is, is what are we? I, I don't, I don't mind doing the sediment control and like I said, we even threw a bone in on the front building with just some sort of like a. Mo basin to just kind of retain a little bit of the gutter water, which what we just pipe the gutters over that, because that's essentially the building runoff. There's no other disturbance other than the buildings and a, and an electric line from one building to another, so there's just a two-foot wide trench. As far as any kind of site disturbance, there's no, I mean, the sites are pretty level as far as any site crack. It's not really gonna change anything.
Yeah, there's no, you, you know, they ask about utilities, but there's no sewer, no water. It's only electric line to run lights. And note, and over, and door operators.
So the question here CJ is that we have impervious surface now. And we're putting a building on impervious surface. And so it doesn't require any more stormwater according to CG, CJ Miller, right?
Well, it's.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, I think the concern, um, so if I could just, I don't recall if the board received. Uh, the comments from uh, TG Miller that they sent on uh, May fifth and sixth. So um, both Sabrina and Dondy did send comments and uh, one of the questions. Relative to the stormwater is about the um, there appear to be some kind of gravel or some kind of. Operations to the southern end of the site and I think that that's what they were curious about the inclusion of. Uh, within ground disturbance, if that makes sense.
Right, that's on the parking lot where the building would be. So there's entire, there's some gravel piles that are storage for the business there. They're on the impervious parking lot. Those will be. Those would be basically removed because that's where the building would sit.
I think he's talking about further south of where it's showing on the actual site plan is what I mean to say.
Well, on this, if you look at.
A while back, like we.
Yeah.
Because.
So there's just a topsoil storage pile out there. There's just unscreened topsoil that was from the construction of the duplexes where we removed the topsoil for the parking lot and buildings. And that's seeded and mulched and.
Um, if I.
I mean, there's some, there's some more, like the gravel parking lot kind of goes all the way out back there, yeah.
If you look at that small overall site plan, I don't know if those of you have it on computer, you probably can see it a lot better. But there's a portion on the over, on the enlarged site plan, we don't show that whole. Gravel area extending south. We show maybe half of it.
Right, and then this corner one up on top, there's a small scale there is, but that's just basically, like I say, that's that gravel area just kind of. Goes all the way out back there, probably hundred and fifty feet, two hundred feet past the power lines.
I see that on the uh, on the photograph that I've got here.
Yep.
You say that those topsoil piles are mul- uh, seeded and mulched?
Yeah, yep. I mean, the face of it's not, because we occasionally use it for a log, but the whole, the, the overall pile is, I mean, that's been there since we built the apartments. Shoot, nine, ten years ago. It was all the topsoil from that site that we basically had to remove to build the buildings and the roadway.
When they're talking about utilities, I thought they're talking about the uh, storage building being placed over the top of the uh. Two-inch water main.
No, it's not.
No, it's right. That's on the other side of the vinyl fence. If you're looking at the original stormwater layout.
No, no, I'm, I'm looking at the, the site plan that you gave us. That shows the storage building and uh, the two-inch diameter water line, water main goes right underneath the corner of the building.
It shouldn't be, it's, it's more, it's on the other side of the fence, which is six or eight feet behind it.
Well, take a look at the one that you sent us. It, it's, it goes right, right underneath it.
I mean, obviously we wouldn't do that too much, because then we got, if we ever have to dig it up.
I don't see it on the stuff that I, you're saying ice on a deal, Eric?
It's gotta be.
Just, just what we, it's what I got uh, from.
Yeah.
That shows the orange outline of the proposed building. Superimposed on the, on the site plan. And underneath the corner.
Tom is holding it up.
So I'm not.
Right.
Well, we're gonna.
So that was the, that was, that's not an ASB build is the problem. But I mean, we'd have to determine that, but that's, that was the original stormwater in the, in the septic layout from the original duplex.
No, that's not stormwater. That, that is, that is a drinking water main.
Correct, but it's on the original layout for the duplexes as a, as a drawing, but it wasn't as built in the exact location as the drawing.
But anyways, Larry, we're gonna have to move that storage building anyway.
It has to get moved because we don't meet the setbacks for the, I thought it was fifty-foot right away for the easement. It's fifty-foot each side of it.
So we gotta move that, we gotta move that storage building anyway.
To the east?
Correct. It'll probably return to ninety degrees.
And then move further south. So it'll be on the other side of the power line, you know, is it? For Scott, it's not important that it be easily accessible. He just needs a spot to store appliances and stuff for all the duplexes.
So, so you're talking about the southerly storage building moving southerly of the overhead power line?
Correct.
Potentially, because of the size restraints for the setbacks of the power line.
Okay, I'm talking about. But Larry, Larry's talking about the northerly storage building.
It sits on top of a two inch water main.
Um, he's talking, there's a water main in here, but it's over here.
So yeah, you would, you would have to identify that on the the drawing.
Correct, that the, yeah, that's our fault because the problem is is that it was, it's imposed on the original. Layout for the building out of that for the project ten years ago, not the as-built building. Correct, you know what I'm saying, but.
Not an as.
We didn't lay out water lines on a private property to the penny, it was more or less, that was the conceptual drawing for the original development. So I mean, obviously, we would not construct that because we've hit anyways with a post of the building. As far as building over the water lines, we would determine that it's not there.
So I guess, real quick, obviously, we gotta move a building, we may then move the garbage building. To where the store, where that forty by sixty. Storage building is come off the fence, we've got an eight foot high fence there backing up to that duplex, come off of that some, so you could get access. The open part of the. Garbage building would face east then. Rather than south. And we would move the storage building further into that southerly.
Gravel.
Gravel dump off area. So we can change that, but it's. It still goes back to the question of stormwater.
Right, the original question is, do we need a stormwater plan for this? Project if the buildings that are going up are simply going. On an impervious surface already.
Correct.
And CJ, we're not sure who makes that determination.
Well, it'd be the stormwater management officer.
Because all I'm saying is, I've got something from TG Miller saying, our position is correct. And then I've got a position from your stormwater person who's basically saying.
Well, Donnie just had other question, comments about it, right, I mean, he was worried about maintaining the fire truck lane which would be maintained. He was worried about the management agreement that.
Doesn't exist.
Right, I mean, his comments were just general, it wasn't really on the basis of impervious or not. He was more or less rounding up some other stuff on the project.
But is Lynn, has Lynn looked at this? Lynn is still our officer, right?
Yes, of course, and we do obviously refer everything to um town engineers for initial review relative to stormwater, so. Um, I think what what Dandy was asking about, you know, first is, are we going to have an operations maintenance agreement for the existing stormwater? Um, system and to make that a condition of um approval, um, request an annual inspection. Um, and then uh like you guys were just commenting on about the fire access and turnaround requirements, it sounds like. I'm hearing that there may be some revision of the uh disposition of the buildings on the site.
Yeah, we might have to just change because of the easement setbacks.
Okay.
There, I'm sorry, there is room to get a fire truck through there, but.
Right, it will be maintained as far as that is.
Yeah, do me a favor, George, when uh. You're, you know, updating drawings, um, just be a little more more clear because we've got two buildings that are close to the same size. One's a storage and one's an equipment storage, if you can like number them on the plan or something, the site plan, just be a little helpful.
I think, okay, I can do it down, I think what I did was, I used titles, there's equipment storage in the storage and then it it goes also with the elevations. To say, you know, so you can see, each, when we gave them a name, continue the names through on the elevation as well. But we can call them.
Come out.
They all look pretty orange.
Those titles didn't come out on the printing.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at my eleven by seventeen that I gave you guys and it shows, and what I can do is I can call them one, two, three or something like that. And we can delineate which building's which.
But it does come out on the photograph.
Right, that's the one CJ's got.
Yeah, it comes out on the S one, but not, not the other one there.
I don't see it, it's not on, I don't have any labels on the S one that I'm looking at.
Uh, A A one, it's uh the fourth page of their packet.
Yeah, you're looking at page eleven and it's page fourteen or whatever that. On the, on the orange ones, it just doesn't show anything.
I have two S ones also.
It's, you're gonna be looking at S one and A one.
What I did, Jerry, was I gave you, there was a question. Rather than redraw the stormwater stuff on the thing I did, I gave you Wayne's original stormwater drawing. And so if you're looking at that as an S one, these buildings don't show.
The S one that I.
An S one here. I have an S one that has the orange buildings on it.
Yeah, that's, I don't, that's, does, there's a, there's a stamp down in the corner, is that Wayne?
That's, okay, so.
Yep, it's Wayne.
So the town engineers superimpose the buildings as per the proposed.
They did the orange buildings, right?
Yeah, so what they did was take your S one, George, and uh superimpose the buildings actually in orange on, you got it on.
That's why we don't have that drawing.
What's going, what are you talking about?
Yeah, so we're all confused.
Do those guys have our, do those guys have our S one and our A one?
Yes, of course, yeah, that was just sent to them uh as part of the package.
And that would add the clarification of the buildings and the elevations of the names of the buildings.
But. But anyways, obviously, we've got to redo. Based off the nice egg easement, but I still, I still like to, I guess the answer is we need to talk to Lynn.
About whether.
Stormwater.
Right, I think he makes that determination according to what CJ just said.
Okay.
I think what they're. What I was gonna say is that I think what they're trying, what TG Miller, you know, towns engineers are trying to do is ascertain whether this.
Right, see, that's an old, that's not even there anymore.
Okay, oh, that perhaps it's just showing up on um, you know, old aerials.
So everything, yeah, so everything, so the pile, if you can zoom back in.
Sure.
And then down a little bit, this was all crushed, this was all recycled concrete, these piles that are to the left here, the gray ones. See where the row of trees are to the top? Yep. So all this pile, this gray pile, this is all the way down through here. We bring in recycled concrete from job sidewalks and stuff and then we reuse them in the bases, so that pile's gone. We bring in like.
Have just been asking about.
We bring in like blacktop concrete at times and then we use them in like. The bottom driveway bases or foundations or something, the structural fill, because it's heavy fill. And then, so that's all gone. That's just back to the parking lot that is sat on basically the gravel.
So I think Sabrina's comments would stand then, if that's not a part of the project area.
I don't have a drone or we could take a live photo, but the Google's, the the Google Earth is a little behind our production.
Well, we still want to include inspection, annual inspections by the stormwater officer in this, is that what you're suggesting CJ?
Because our, I think what our problem was is our, our pond was actually one of the first ones in the town. We actually had, we had everybody in the county up there for a class and uh when Ellen was doing the D E C stuff, we had every town municipal there. Because they were, that was kind of the first big one around. And so I guess what happened is that we've never signed a official maintenance that now the town really requires. As far as I'm in the business to clean them and we will clean them because we're not going to back up our footer drains or any of our, our, you know, our drainage that drains into it, which is inevitable for me. But obviously now as a, as a municipality, they've obviously wanted agreements that are binding to the point where if somebody doesn't or doesn't have the means to do it, the town can do the means. So I don't have a problem if that's part of the deal. To getting the building, you know, to signing something in more of a writing, but we never really. I don't even know if they ever required it or didn't, I don't know if it's something that was not being done then, but obviously we've never done it.
So, so I guess.
These things tend to evolve over time.
Yeah.
So I know that Lynn is out Thursday. Um, so we've tried to get to him tomorrow or something, so then my question is, if we redo the site plan. Um, and talk to Lynn and get a determination. We have to have stuff in the, because I won't change elevations, we'll just change some stuff around a little on the site. But where are we then as far as getting approval?
CJ?
Well, I think you, well, I'm, I'm just not sure how much use the S one utility plan is if it's not. An as-built drawing, I mean.
Right, we don't, we're just gonna unsubmit that drawing and then we'll just redraw.
Well, I think that came from T, that probably came from TG.
Well, it's Wayne's drawings that has the two inch H D P line on it and it's over, they impose the buildings on it and it's not, it's on the other side of the fence, I mean, I know where I done it, I just have.
Okay, well, the the good, the good thing here CJ is the guy who built it is the African.
I just gotta build an as-built for the drawing basically, not what we're.
Yeah, and as-built, I think an as-built would be super helpful, it sounds like we're. It sounds like we've clarified the ground disturbance relative to, I think that was the concern from TG Miller was about that southern port that.
The back side.
You just explained, yeah, um, obviously about the property being in the map direct of way, that would obviously um. You know, be uh an issue, any proposed utility connections, that's what I'm seeing from TG Miller that they're looking for. They're looking for limits of disturbance of that and any utility connections. And they're asking for a utility plan, so they're basically looking for as-built here, so um, that I would, it sounds like.
That's all in the driveway, so I mean, like I said, the disturbance is just a linear trend.
So the answer to your question, George, is probably as soon as CJ gets that information. And um. Gets it to TJ Miller. Then um. And we get it back, then we can work on approval.
Okay, I understand, and my only question is, when is, you need stuff for the meeting with what the project team, which is?
Thursday.
Yeah, we'll need that, close the business by Thursday, close the business on Thursday so that they can meet the following week and there's a holiday, that's some of the issue. Is that we have Memorial Day holiday coming up, so.
Okay.
Um, you know, I know that's a fast turnaround, but you know, people need time to review things, so.
Yep, understood.
So, and I, did I forward you, George, I think I forwarded you the comments directly from TG Miller, right, with the.
Yes, I mean, and Scott has, I sent them on to Scott too.
Perfect, okay, great, I've been trying to keep you both in anything I receive. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, next.
Next project. Hugo Vista Apartments.
So basically, um, we've submitted, I mean, a quick recap is we've submitted. The draw, the first round of uh stormwater plans to TG Miller, they've replied. With their fixes and wishes to Wayne, Wayne said he'd have them done in about a week and a half or so. So that, that ball's progressively rolling as far as that goes. Um, I know we didn't get the other drawing in on time for the last meeting, Dean, it said something, but now if you can see the site plan here shows. Our water building up front. Um, which we talked about with elevation, it has a four foot overhang on it or so for the mailbox cluster and or. We discussed about standing for a school bus or something. Um, so that's just a building up front that we're going to use for the mailboxes and to hub our um municipal waterline distribution out of. Um, basically, the buildings are um symmetrical in reason, I mean mirrored. But basically, they consist of three two-story, two-bedroom townhouse style. And then on each end is a one-story that would also qualify as a convertible to an ADA unit or um, you know. Uh, handicap accessible or elderly. As part of the requirements on the building. Um, every garage, every building, every uh unit has a one-car garage. Um, there's a, there's one, two, three, four, five, five light poles that would be. Those short twenty-five foot or so. Uh, with dark sky and quiet, any fixtures on the buildings would be dark sky and quiet, obviously. Um. We're gonna line the streets with some maple trees and then each building, each unit gets like a shrub bed in front. Um, they'll be of probably gray in color. With uh black asphalt shingle roofs.
Oh, the other thing we show on the site plan is we show a paved shoulder. Or like a sidewalk.
Correct, on Kuga Vista Woods Edge.
Is the, is the parking area paved or at or gravel?
Paid, yes, paved.
Paved?
It's, it's paved with with um catch basins.
For the stormwater.
They pick up the stormwater and take it down to the stormwater retention pond.
And then there's the uh twenty-eight foot radius hammerhead at the end for the fire truck. Requirements based on the specs.
One thing we talked, I talked to Scott about was taking it by the fire department, talking to him. But Wayne, talking with Wayne, he drew that as with the curves that are needed for by the. New York State or whatever is for the fire truck turnaround.
Your. Three.
George, I got a question on your.
Open the three foot wide paved shoulder is gonna keep people walking. Around down.
Yeah, because I mean, now everybody's, there's a big serious amount of pedestrian traffic through there now to the dollar store. So my idea was is that. The grade, and you know, if you guys read contours, but the grade off of Woods Edge, that slopes pretty hard to the west. Down through Giga Vista, so those buildings, that first building is gonna set down in a shelf with an eight foot. S- slightly steep bank up to Woods Edge and then the ditch at Woods Edge, then the ditch is there. So it really doesn't allow us for any. I, you know, you 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 couldn't transition that grade. So I think the best thing is if we just kept it up at the road, we paved the shoulder and then it's also. You know, sadly maintainable by the town with a wing of the snow pop, so even if there are people are out in the winter. Where if we had a six hundred foot sidewalk, I, we probably wouldn't be apt to be shoveling it, but if it was off, you know, into the regular median of the road.
We, right now, the people are walking on a gravel shoulder.
Correct, or in the road.
Or in the road.
And so with the gradient, it's more of the gradient on the east side. Because by the time we get the spruce trees in there for buffer. On the hillside, they'll be wedged in the hill. That basically it doesn't. We would have to fill the ditch in to put the drive, to put the si- a sidewalk off the road, I guess, what I'm getting at.
Yep, I see that.
Which becomes a drainage issue for the town road and. Also us because then obviously there, the road stormwater is going to then to come into ours. Where now it'll just maintain the ditch line around the, to the west side as it does now.
Somebody was asking me a question.
Yeah, I had, I, I've got two questions, if you guys second here.
Sure, go ahead.
The first floor plan um is, it looks like the entry door. Is off to the side in front of the garage, is there like a canopy that extends over that garage?
So that's like gonna have like a four foot canopy over top of the garage with a wing wall, so the snow won't blow in there. The problem we're having with that is is that to get, to keep. More wheelchair accessible.
Uh huh.
Be within the parameters of the space we had, it was, it was easier to have them come out of the garage door for car openings and everything. There wasn't a lot of clearance to get a door in off the side of the garage. So we thought that if the garage is wide enough, they'll, they would roll out onto a concrete apron that's still undercover.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
So you have that undercover, it was more accessible for stuff and then it still shouldn't get the weather because it's um, even the wing wall will come out to the face of the eve.
Right.
On the, on the outside edge, so it'll be kind of almost like a sheltered.
Okay.
Like a three-sided.
If you look, Alan, if you look on um A four. We don't show the whole thing, but over in the bottom left, it says one-story unit garage section.
Oh yeah, I see it now, yeah, I see it, okay, yeah, good, good, that's what I thought, and the. The second question I had was concerning the uh stormwater pond. Um, my concern over the years is, is. Is if the pond has water in it, it freezes over, you have kids in the apartment, they get onto the ice of the pond and fall in, is there gonna be depth there? And or will a pond be fenced off?
So it looks like the live bottom should be. About, it should be about three and a half feet deep. It looks like, based on the drawing, I mean, the, right now, without TG Miller altering or doing something.
Right, but.
The problem is is that the stormwaters now have, I don't like them any more than you do because of the sight of it, but. They have, they're essentially designed to have what they call a live bottom where standing water. Because that creates that aqua bench that the grass grows in and that filters.
But you know what my concern is, and maybe even your insurance company is that. Yeah, if there's ice on there and a kid falls through, are you gonna, I mean, would fencing around that help with your insurance company and?
They don't usually. They don't usually care about it and what we've ended up doing at Meadowbrook is we just don't tolerate people really walking near it. The problem is is that of any of these ponds is to fence them in, then there's maintenance going forward. So then how do you get a piece of equipment into the fence? That's, I, that's, it's a great question, but I don't think anybody's been able to kind of answer it because it's like. You don't want people in there, but then how do you get equipment in there to maintain? You're gonna tear the fence down every five years? Might end up doing is planting a little bit of spruce trees on that east side of that. If it's just kind of a turn into a no man's land out in that corner, then people are less apt to go down in there.
Alright, but yeah, I mean.
Septics would be all level terrace for playing. So there, there is almost like an acre and a half of lawn on that, just the west side of that west building.
Right, but you know how kids are and.
We like to go play in the water.
Especially if they're frogs.
I don't, like I said, we could kind of address or maybe we could do something sort more of like I say, a visual barrier of like some trees or. I mean, either you just kind of put a split rail fence up or something that.
Yeah, I mean, even a split rail fence or something.
Says, hey, don't go down, you know.
I, I got a better idea. How about floral bundle rose? Stops cows and it'll stop kids.
Stop me, I'll tell you that.
Well, you know, speaking of, of frogs, Bill Doody was growing some big frogs. We were telling him we should just capture them, sell frog legs.
But yeah, I mean, we could, we could look at that really as the layout is because there's so much, there's so much layout on the septics because of obviously the size.
Yeah, and that's just a suggestion. Maybe just like you say, just a post and rail fence around it might be enough.
And then you just pull a couple posts to get a piece of equipment in. It's not major. Right.
You think Larry?
And then basically, the drawing on the back, each, each unit has a patio as well too. With a privacy fence in between it. That's the boxes on the backside.
So the one thing that gets interesting, Larry, you'll love this one. So Scott's applying for ADA? ADA loan? Well, they've got a thing in there, no fossil fuels whatsoever. So we were gonna have a preheated slab because it's slab on grade. We're gonna use mini splits to heat and cool. But we're saying to maintain like sixty degrees or fifty-five degrees on a slab with a boiler, we can't do it.
But I'm looking into a heat, an air source boiler. As an option, but.
Those don't work so good.
Yeah, we're aware of that because uh, that was gonna be one of the next questions you heard from. Uh, any one of three or four of us is what, what your heating was gonna be because we're, we're dealing with the same thing.
Three head units and then a couple electric baseboards in the bathroom.
Everything's electric.
The question that I was gonna ask uh, has to do with, with homework for us. I think if we look back far enough CJ, there's gonna be some commentary on putting fencing around retention ponds. And I'm. I. Trying to think back to my last form water course a couple of years ago. But I, I think it's coming from the state. There was some objection to uh. Uh, putting fencing on retention ponds. And I know that there was one originally. Down on the Chima subdivision on the corner of um. Trip Hammer and Bush Lane. And that, and that fence was removed. So we, we really should look into that because we do get asked that question from time to time.
Okay, so.
We're also on the, also on the energy side. We're gonna. We're gonna move forward and try to progressively push for, we're also gonna be putting probably fifty amp or um. Blankout plates in the garages for any electric cars in the future. Cause we don't have tenants asking yet, but that day is gonna come.
Good idea.
So we're just gonna kind of put a dedicated circuit to that blanket out because I don't. Didn't know how, whose, what connections are gonna be made on it.
Just for information, that's coming in the next code and it is actually in the stretch energy code. So like, like the city and the town are taught them up onto the stretch code and that'll be in there.
Um, and then um, how about garbage? No dumpster?
The garbage, all of our tenants and, and all of Lansing and Dryden bring their garbage to the facility that we just discussed on. So we have garbage, they have garages here to maintain if they wanted a garbage can. We just, I don't. That's why I'm kind of trying to build that building because now I have just loose garbage dumpsters out there. The wind like yesterday at fifty mile an hour, we're picking garbage out of our own hedgerow for an hour. Where if it's in an enclosure, it's lit, it's safe, it's not icy. You know, it, um, but that basically the, every tenant has garbage and no start recycling included in their rent. And they bring it back to that facility and they usually are handing in their rent checks or doing something else, but.
Perfect.
But there's no onsite storage of that. Um, basically, and then like I said, we just have standard twenty-five foot LED lights. On all of them, you know, poles or something. Not, they're not even spaced to really create. A Walmart effect. It's just more or less a shadow, you know, so that you can walk down if you wanted to check your mail at night.
Other questions?
So that's four of those, I see.
There's like one up by, there's one across from the mailbox buildings and one, two, three. Four, five of them.
Yep, two on the east and three on the west.
I'm gonna guess uh, Dean, that they're probably gonna be in the row like eighty-five watts, kind of like the lights we got at Andy's building there on Trip Hammer.
I'm probably sure as well.
Those are twenty-fives, but the, it's sad intensity. Those are like eighty-five watt LEDs and they give out a fair amount of light, but there's not a, there's hardly any glare.
Yeah, the ones over at Andy's place there, they, they show up fairly yellowy and they're, they don't show up extremely bright. They're, they're kind of. Almost give a dim glow and which is really nice.
I don't want it too lit because I mean people sleeping, I mean, you know. It's more or less just a safety thing to kind of, if you're gonna walk, if it was a nice summer night and you wanted to. Walk down, check your mail or something or whatever, you know, it's just more or less of a. To get around, to get out of your car and not stumble to your front door if you didn't leave your light on.
And then there'll probably be lights in the softest over the entrances.
Correct. In the front and the back, we have an overhang in the back that can levers the back doors.
So the back doors to the patios have a overhang, so partly protects the door. So hopefully if we don't rot the frames in two years.
Yeah, I'll have the light in the.
They'll just have a soft at like, like a can light with an LED in the down doors. And there's no um, lights or anything out other than that really, just entrance lights. There might be a couple can lights above the mailbox cluster in that four-foot overhang, that water building.
All the electrics coming in uh, below grade?
Correct. There's transformers grown, maybe not on this one. They'll be just transformer basically in those middle islands in between the two buildings and then hub services off of that. It's still kind of determined because with the electric load and then the potential for a car, if we're gonna have to be putting one fifties or.
It'd be, it'll be like a forty amp, two forty, forty amp. Chargers, because they want the fast chargers. My question is, when it gets really cold in February and everybody's on electric and we need more power, do we drain the cars back into the houses?
Car is the bad.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, uh, yeah, the, some of the, the new Ford pickup actually has a rating for that.
Well, that F-one fifty had generators built into them. They, Ford donated them to everybody in Texas when they didn't have power.
It's a good idea with outlets on, in the bed so you can run a construction site on.
Yeah, think of all the times Jerry.
No, it's much better than running an outlet and trying to use one of those little inverters off your battery.
Alright, then it trips out every five minutes.
Right. Only when the electrician runs the drill.
This is all looking good.
Anybody got any other questions?
No.
Alright, well.
Can I just ask uh, just one thing? Um, it, just wanted to make sure you contacted the Business Energy Advisors. Cause that's how the county is gonna comment in their two thirty-nine review.
Yeah, I think I, I was, I've been talking for a couple of years when we presented this to uh, the girl that left. Yes, so we were on, we were back and forth for months and then now she's been just. Um, put into another position, but I have contacted the new lady and we're trying to just. Set stuff up, but without, unfortunately without the. Drawings per se on the buildings. They're limited to kind of what they can recommend on help for that, so as far as, you know. The scale of it, but we are, yeah, we'll be working through that. And then I've got. Uh, Virgil that does ours, lower door tests and stuff. He has a friend that has one of the air source to uh, water. Up in Danby that he's doing radiant heat with. And so I was gonna go look at his setup. To see, cause I'm, we just have a lot of tenants that rent our apartments because of the radiant slabs and the other ones. And they come from competitors and other people that have. Where the temperature in the air is sixty or seventy, but it doesn't mean that the slab and the rock is. And so I'm just, I'm nervous about it. So I kind of wanted to supplementally heat that a little bit, even if it was on my dollar, so it was somewhat included, but. We're looking at trying to do something that if, if we can get into that with an air source that is not. Obviously fossil that we can maintain the IDA on there and for some sort of supplement slab heat with a sensor. And then they would just take it from there to condition it to this, to the space that they wanted. But everything will be, everything in the units is gonna be um, air source heat pumps or electric heat like in the bathroom or something, you know, somewhere that's just up well. And then obviously we're, we're two-inch extruded foam on the outside of the stud, spray foam or rocks on the in cavities and I mean, it's all obviously energy built.
And um, I, I sent Georgia a little note as well. I was just looking for this S one to be broke up. Broken up into a few um, drawing sheets. And if you guys could, I don't know if you've got the software for this, but. If you could show, if you could do a rendering, maybe from. I'm thinking thirty-four might be, this is gonna be a very visible project. So I'm, I'm thinking the board might wanna see, you know.
That's, okay, that's, I don't have any program for this. That's a bunch of work, so.
If you could at least show us an elevation from thirty-four.
Yeah, well.
Maybe just a little snapshot, um, not.
Rear elevation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the rear, okay, you've got the rear elevations each building. We can put it together for the two buildings.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be too fancy. Just thinking about kind of that view is so um. You know, there's so much uh, traffic uh, there every day. My guess is that somebody's, you know, gonna ask um, you know, what that would be and I. Not seeing any variation in the color palette. So um, I just figured out.
Future, obviously the, the spruce trees will grow up to, you know, offer that even more as far as time goes on, but obviously not today. As far as the, the, the west view.
And you guys, you guys checked with Cricket on that uh, paved shoulder?
Yeah, I've run that by him. Um, he wasn't opposed to it because he's, you know, I mean, the problem is there's just not a lot of right away there. I mean, to get, like I said, the ditch line's only five or so foot from the edge of the pavement. It really doesn't like.
Long, long you checked in with him, that's good.
Yep, the problem was it was a rural road and now it's. It's the, the public works is gonna be becoming larger with the, with the adjustment of pedestrian traffic kind of, but. If we can get that done and then maybe, I don't know, maybe he'd even, like I said, we could run it by, but maybe they'd even run it by the. Woods Edge and then that takes it all the way to where it's wide at the ball fields that.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be a.
You know, and then that way it's, because their, their hedgerow is very close to the road too. And they're, they have a pile that goes up. So really they're really stuck to just on the side of the road too. As far as any kind of future sidewalk space, they don't have any real estate there. Their sign in the front and then they're, they have huge Norway trees there that are fifty years old that are. Nice buffer for them, but there's really no real estate left between there and the side of the road unfortunately.
Okay. People driving down the road are pretty much gonna be looking into the second floor bedroom windows of the. Buildings, aren't they?
And that's why the spruce trees on the hill will be big. Will probably try to get in there twelve to fourteen footers. To get some sort of instant satisfaction because obviously that reflects our rent. But yeah, it will be, that's what I'm saying. It's hard to depict that, but yeah, they'll be sinking, that, that'll be. The, that building will be at a much lower grade than the road.
And I know you did, um, oh, sorry.
We're just off the top of your head, uh, your, your base elevation compared to the mosque. You're gonna be what about uh? Your floor elevation is gonna be about eight feet higher than the uh, base of the building where the mosque is gonna be?
Probably more. That thing's down in the hole is the problem. Ron, Ron, Ron should have built that one a little higher, but yeah, but the existing water flows out of that corner of the pond. That's it. And there's like a, there's a little drainage swell, because that was all originally done at Stormwater years ago. When Wayne or when uh, well Wayne originally did it for Ron on the original, when it was supposed to be the industrial part. And so there's an outlet that goes in there and then comes in behind Woods Edge Lake Breeze and goes down and behind basically to the Asbury Church.
Yeah, I know. I inspected the road in the stormwater back then.
Yeah, so basically we're just gonna retain our water and then discharge it into that still that natural area if whatever. On, you know, on the low flow end of it.
Well, my reason for asking the question was to provide some comparison. Everybody's talking about the view from Route thirty-four. And basically if you can close your eyes and reflect, your roof will be probably. Between twelve and eighteen feet higher than the roof of Ron's building.
Yeah, on the, on the uphill building, sure.
I'm gonna say that the, on the, the westernmost run of buildings is probably about eleven feet tall, higher. Than the west property line.
Okay, eleven feet, not twelve feet then.
Yeah.
I was running the numbers while you were.
Right.
But yeah.
Right, so essentially, right, the second story is what's gonna be. Visible over their roof line, other than looking up the road obviously as you're coming through the end of the road.
Yeah, just, just, just a point of reference for, you know, so that we can picture it and. You know, you're, you're probably not gonna be able to do as, as George says, your uh, your software.
We're not gonna be able to put the mosque in there.
The one thing I had to check, I don't know if we can. Do you have any idea what a Ramus was?
For height?
For height or for floor level? Cause a Ramus owned a house there on the corner.
In the Seacord.
On Seacord Lane. Did you get a sense of what, okay?
I don't know. I might be able to find somebody that if we could take a photo of that and then impose. I don't know if we can impose the drawing on the photo, like Photoshop the drawing into the photo, even if it's kind of half, don't, you know.
I don't have the glorified Adobe, but yeah, you might be able to. Have to see if Wayne's got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Larry.
Does anyone else have any comments to make?
Yeah, it's getting past my bedtime.
Yeah, and probably Jerry hasn't had dinner yet.
Actually, I did get a chance to eat.
Okay, so we'll get working.
I only, may I just, one more thing, just, and I mentioned in my letter, George was um, just some address. Perhaps some kind of playground, open space, kind of recreational.
So basically, we didn't really, we didn't really plan on anything other than the grass space because the park is so close.
Okay.
Essentially, basically, especially if we can get kind of maybe the town to help in. If we were to pave that whole shoulder across Woods Edge, I mean, we're only a five-minute walk to the ball fields and. The park behind the playground, the pavilion and the stuff behind the town hall. So that, that plays more into the pond of my, of my liability of the playground in today's world. This is who, if somebody, if your kid breaks his arm out there, who's at fault? And if, what happens if it's not even a resident, if it's just a passerby using your play, I, you know. I'd rather try to avoid the playground space other than just the lawn space. Um, for, I mean, we, we let tenants have like bounce houses for birthday parties or something, but as far as permanent structure for liability. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just more curiosity about just uh, exploring, you know, whether you considered it. So, yeah, that's.
I think the big thing with Scott saying, there's a pretty good playground now. I think the big thing was Scott saying, there's a pretty good playground not far away.
And, and the town takes the liability.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. CJ, do you have a planning report?
Uh, I believe the future directive is to reserve those for the. Working meeting, but if there's questions, you know, just let me know.
Well, we can discuss that, the planning report and the town. Board report, I saw some emails that said we wanted to try to put them in the working meeting. I'd like. I'd like to have them on whatever meeting is most likely to be well attended, town members. I'm not sure which one would be. Maybe the working meeting is more, is better attended by people on, uh. On YouTube.
Well, I could say this, the working meeting will follow pretty closely behind the report that I'm preparing. Right, so it'll be kind of easier to answer questions, whereas the town board liaison report. At the action meeting usually follows closely behind that month's town board meeting, so, could just, we could just split them up.
Yep, that works.
Well, my, my thought, the reason I wrote the original letter to you CJ. Is I looked at, uh, tonight and including the reports, which. Take less time than my actual conversation right now. Uh, were eighteen items and, you know, my thought was. Could we do something and when you see that one of the meetings is going to have a lot of items, maybe we use the working meeting for. For part of those items, like I, I made this, this, uh, this suggestion before. When we went to a working meeting and a public meeting. And what I said, if we saw that we were going to have an overloaded meeting. Rather than have a four or five hour meeting, if we could, uh. Announce to the public that, uh, that month there would be two meetings.
I think that makes a confusing, if we have to say, oh, one month we have one meeting, one month we have two meetings.
Well, we have two meetings every month, but what we would be doing would be shifting part of the load to the other meeting.
Right.
Which is in effect what did this month.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to follow up on what Jerry said, uh, it's not infrequent that you have a decision, uh, during a working meeting. You know, something that comes up or something that bounces off of this meeting, so I think the public really needs to have the impression that there's quite possible to have. A decision made at any of the meetings.
Yes, and that is true. Alright, you're gonna save your planning report for the next meeting?
Sure, I mean, if there's a specific question you have, you know, no worries, just shout it out.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments they want to bring up tonight?
CJ and I were talking about, um. The need for paper packets, if you'd prefer to not get them or if you'd still rather have a paper packet.
I like to stop and pick up the packet if I can, because.
So do I.
Two or three, I'd have to have two or three computers go in here.
Well, right, right now, that's what I'm doing because I didn't have a packets this week and I've got. Uh, I've got the, uh, everything up on the computer over here and. I'm. Waving hello to everybody on this one over here, sometimes I forget which one I'm looking at.
Um, so for the moment, the paper packets are probably worth having. Probably a pain and takes a lot more time, but.
Good for me. If we're not meeting in person.
Which is a great segue, right?
Yeah, you can all think about what we're doing, the executive orders are going away. And, uh, if you'd like to start meeting in person. We can bring that up at any point and we can, uh, start as long, but it's up to the board, if you like this way.
Nothing against you all, but I'm, I've kind of gotten used to doing this.
But you can think about it and we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
It's a lot more environmentally friendly because it doesn't have us driving up and down the freaking roads.
At home. We might not have a choice, uh, as I think they're ending as of, uh, early next month and we might have to meet, uh, in person. Because we don't have the ability to meet, uh, remotely.
What's ending, what's ending, Joe?
The, the govern, the governor's, uh. Orders that allow for remote meetings.
Oh.
Oh.
So when that executive order goes away, then we don't have the option to meet remotely anymore.
That's right.
Uh, I think you can, you can still meet remotely, can't you?
You can, but you have to allow every place that a board member is at to be advertised separately and the public can come and attend at that location as well.
I don't think I want twenty people.
They gotta get across the free fire zone first.
Well, we'll keep you posted on what we hear, I'm sure Guy will be winging on that.
Yeah, I, I'm planning on asking Guy about it, uh, in another week or so, just to double check.
Okay, nice, keep us posted, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody, for coming tonight. We appreciate you and the meeting is now adjourned.
Okay.